Stand to say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. Motion to approve the agenda with one addition. We may have executive session depending on personnel at the conclusion of the meeting.
So move.
Thank you, Aaron. Second, Joel, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Conflicts disclosure. None? Public communications. We have three tonight that we know of, and so we'll just get things started. Kwanis, you're up first.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Couple minutes reporting from the Kwanis Club on the concessions for this past year. Brought in a total of forty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars, which was about twenty-eight hundred dollars greater than last year. Would've been a lot better. We lost a few days. We lost some track meets. Lost lots of the Atomas. You know, that would've been huge. Our costs were twenty-three thousand four forty-nine. Gross profit of twenty-three thousand three eighty-seven, of which forty percent of that goes to the school. So we presented the check, the check to the school for ninety-three hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-three cents last Monday at Kwanis. The swim team parents help out the Kwanis with the year, and they got a check for twenty-nine hundred dollars to help out. So that leaves us about eleven thousand one thirty-two. And, you know, we just gave five grand out to scholarships last month. And, you know, another good year. It's just nice to get in front of the board and present this information so you folks know that Kwanis appreciates it, helps keep us going. If it wasn't for concessions, I don't know if we had a group or something like that. You know, it's really been nice to present all these. I don't know how many years we've been doing this. I'd been in town since ninety-four, and I know we were doing it way before that, so.
I don't remember anybody doing, doing it differently.
Everybody else, yeah. Yep. Other than the COVID year, you know, that what's been going to school has been around that eight to nine thousand dollars a year, so. Really appreciate it. So.
Thank you, guys. Any questions?
Likewise, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate the working relationship we have that you guys take care of that, so.
You bet.
It helps us out.
Sounds great.
Thanks, Todd, for line of crew up, so she's.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, Todd.
Take care.
You too.
All right. After Todd, we have Brianna Wegleitner with the reporter and farmer.
Okay, hi, everybody. So I guess if you don't know me, I am a Webster grad from 2020, and I am going into my senior year at SDSU. And I'm studying advertising. And this summer, I decided to come back to Webster and do my internship with the reporter and farmer. And they basically tasked me with doing a whole project by myself, and it is called the Day County Area Business Magazine. And the last time that we did anything similar to this was in 2017, which is a magazine that I provided you all with. So if you want to turn and look through that. So there's some examples of the different types of advertisements that we will be doing in this. As well, I've placed a pricing sheet on your table, so you can look at those prices as well.
So Brianna, I know that you came to my office, and I thought you did an outstanding job. Your presentation was really good, so I'm glad you're down here tonight giving us a presentation. So I like the idea of what you're doing. I like the idea of what you put together for us. What would you envision for the school? What, how would you advertise the Webster Area School District?
Well, we would hopefully get some pictures of obviously the new additions that are being done, but also just talk about how that came to be and do a really good interview on your efforts in trying to build up this school and make it look very nice and have all these new places for people to study and do all their new, like agriculture or whatever it is, and really focus on that and try and show the people that this is a really good school to go to.
I think that I've seen, for example, I know Kathy Mellon provided us, Florence does something very similar where they have their own promotional materials. If we were to look at doing something, is that something you can take a look at and maybe even give us an idea of if we could get somewhere like that?
Yep, we can definitely look into that and see if that's something that can be incorporated into this as well, if that's what you guys are interested in doing. And every advertisement, no matter what size you get, does include a write-up on the business or I guess the school in this case. So no matter what you get, there is going to be a story written on it, but obviously, depending on the size of the ad, the length is going to vary, so.
This is a sample of the advertisement we did last time.
What pages are they?
Eleven.
And this is not a magazine that's going to be done very often. The last time, like I said, was 2017, and they're not sure when they would do something like this again.
Well, I'm glad that Joel volunteered for the photograph back in 2017. Nice job, Joel, you did a nice job. You look great hitting the page in there. But I'd like to explore this idea. Brianna, I think that there's something to be said, especially in today's competitive world with, where, A, we're trying to attract people to come to Webster to work in our local businesses. I think the school's a big part of that. And maybe we need something that's more than just a page. If we were to get you that Florence thing, what they did, could you take a look at that and give me your ideas? You know, maybe even, how much time do we have before you have to make your decisions?
So I guess kind of I need to know decision on the sizing and stuff by the end of June, because I need to start writing the stories by July, because I'll be going back to school early August. So my last week is the first week of August to work on this. And then after that, John and Amanda are going to be working on the printing aspect, so that is not part of my experience with this. But up until that first week of August, I am available to work on this, so.
Is this distributed by, through the subscriptions and also as a handout and placed in?
Yep, it will be placed in one of the issues of the reporter and farmer. They're hoping to have it printed by like August 28th, so somewhere around there, one of those issues, it will be placed directly in there.
Would it be in businesses and communities?
Yep, the Chamber of Commerce will distribute to different businesses, and Realtors will have them to give to new people that are buying houses and moving into these towns in Day County.
Will this go out to other communities other than?
Yes, I believe we have a bit of.
In the Day County area?
Yeah, well, it would've Cottington or Brown or?
Typically, we just market it to the Day County area, but if we find that there is a spot in Cottington that we can put them, or Aberdeen. We do have some businesses advertising because it's the area, out of Aberdeen and out of Lauderdale.
So you're going to be a junior or senior?
I'll be graduating next year, so I'm a senior technically, but junior completing my internship credits, but yeah.
Well, I would like to think we could do better than Florence. So we don't even need to get Florence. Why don't you make something that just sets us apart? Tom is not good at advertising.
I see how that works, that's true. Very, very true. And we are better than Florence. You'll often hear if I ever go to a development corporation, I tell everybody every other community sucks, and I use that phrase quite literally. But I do think that we need to have something that our school district can send to prospective families that are looking to relocate, so.
Not only just in here, but something we can buy from you to give to other people.
Correct. So my question for you is, is that something that could be a, let's say I want to have, I want my own brochure for the Webster School District that we have. Is that something you could help lead us through? Could you help us even using some of our students to figure out how to help write the articles or something? And if this was a project that was more than just, obviously, we're going to want to do, I think, this to get done, you know, the one page. But could we do something above and beyond that? Is that something you could be interested in, maybe working on during this school year? Or is that something you're saying, no, not really, but I'll let people know?
I mean, I would be interested. I just would have to see if it fits with my schedule. My fall schedule does have, I'm only in class for three days a week, so I could come back and work on this if time allows it. But I can't like guarantee anything right now.
That's fine, I put you on the spot with that question, I know that.
Yeah, but it'd definitely be something I'd be interested in doing if that's like something you guys want to do and just do a whole pamphlet on just the school. That would be something I could see if I could come back and kind of do an internship again and do that, if they're interested in getting it with me, but yeah.
I'd be very interested. I was very impressed with how you put things together for, for our business. I mean, I'll be honest with you, normally I don't, I mean, John will vouch, I usually don't jump into that pool, but you made me stop and think, and that, that was nicely done. So why don't we, if the group's okay, would we be all right with at least doing the one page like we did last time? But then, let's see if we can start exploring some options in between now and July, see if we can come up with something better than what Florence did as Jules came about, and see if we could put together a plan, if you are interested for this fall?
Yeah, that would be something I definitely would be interested in doing.
Rest of the group okay with that? Or individually, or reporter and farmer? Do the, we'll figure that second part out within the next few weeks. Are you speaking for yourself or the reporter and farmer?
I guess both. I would still have to talk to Amanda. She is obviously the business owner, and I'd have to ask her if she'd be okay with me coming back and doing something like this with you guys through them. But yeah, so that's why I'm saying I can't commit to anything right now.
So are we buying an ad like this tonight, or are we getting a story?
You're getting an ad and a story.
Okay.
So it'll also have that ad and then the story next to it, depending on how big of a side you do.
Marty, you're in the picture next. I think it just keeps going around the room like that, so. All right, everybody good with that plan at least? And then, oh, Brianna, I'll tell you what, if you get back to me to at least get the information, I think Lori or Jim still has it from what we have from Florence, just so you can see.
Yep.
And then why don't you get back to us, and we'll put you on the July agenda to figure out something from there. But we'll go with the one page for right now, if that sounds good.
Yep, it sounds good.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you for seeing me.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
And if anybody else that is in business would like to contact Brianna in connection with this publication.
I'll have to get Matt to you.
Yeah, my email is at the bottom of that sheet, sir.
I at least return your phone calls right away. I did, I got back right away and got her in within like two days, so.
Yeah, Brianna's doing an excellent job with this publication. She's really beating the streets and trying to get, trying to make sure that we don't miss anybody. You know, we would rather have a no than trying to miss somebody in the Day County area.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thanks for coming. Thank you. Okay, next. For just a short thirty-second presentation, Kim, we'll start the clock. I don't think it'll take you too long.
Sounds good. I'm here for the what, the why, and how can I fix it, okay? So if you, first of all, thank you for your business. I appreciate working with Lori a ton. I also work this account with an EMC insured school guy, Jesse. He's been with here, with me before. He's actually had a day of school board meetings, so couldn't be here because he's at another school tonight, same time, different place. So anyway, if we just want to get started right away, we'll start at the top where it says SFM workers' compensation, okay? In parentheses, you'll see what your premium was last year. To the left is the 2023 renewal premium, okay? How the word comp works is we have a band of years that are included into the premium, into the mod, into your experience rating. So actually, this year, we're putting up some, a couple tough losses in 2021 are now playing into the 2023 premium, and they will for a couple of years.
What is our mod?
One point three nine. But actually, SFM is crediting back, and they're crediting back to a mod of oh point eight five plus another premium discount. So when you have to look at the rate sheet, there is five thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars in premium credit being applied, which in work comp world, I don't get. So again, the, the what or the why is because of claims experience. How to fix it is to promote probably some better decisions in how you're going about what you're doing. Safety as needed, watch where you're walking.
So it's slips, trips, is that kind of our big thing right now?
Slips, trips, falls.
Okay.
And then also, okay, so they also banned it. So I have, like, the total payroll, I believe, is around two point eight million. So we have one ban that is teachers, professionals. Then we have another ban that is all other staff.
Are the claims open?
I am thinking we're to the end, but I, but we, to the end of the twenty-one, but now we have another open. And I actually was expecting, because they happened sort of towards the end of the twenty-one term going into twenty-two, in my mind, I kept thinking those were twenty-two claims, and I kept thinking next year was going to be bad. Well, they were actually before the July twenty-two renewal, so they're twenty-one claims, so playing into here. Other than that, we've had, I mean, the last time we did this, there was several companies that were interested. Not at this point. And I also don't think, as far as premium credits, it is so rare.
I mean, that seems extremely high.
For?
One thirty-nine.
The mod? I guess. It's, I mean, Lori and I have discussed some of the incident specifics.
Yeah, the, the incidents that have happened, it's nothing that we could have prevented. I mean, that's about all I can say about it, so it's, it's an unfortunate situation.
And like I said, with that mod being at one point three nine, they are crediting back to an oh point eight five mod. I don't have another work comp company that I could go to and ask, would you give us an oh point eight five when we're over one?
You know, matter of fact, one thing we can do, Kim, since you did a nice job, I mean, actually, this packet that we had, you know, when it came out?
Yep.
Why don't we have, just instead of you having to try to explain everything, let me just open it up to the board to ask you questions as to the informations here.
Yes.
That way you don't have to go through all of it, because you did a nice job of putting it together. It made sense to me. Gentlemen, what, what questions you have for Kim in regards to the proposal? And I'll, I'll just start off, Kim.
Yes.
I looked at it, you, I think it's just the bit, the business.
It truly is.
I don't see anything really that can be changed. I feel like you're, a lot of the rates that we can somewhat control are reasonable. The ones that we can't control, that's the nature of the business. So I wasn't offended with the increase. I mean, sure, I wish it was less, but we're seeing a lot of things go up fifteen percent. And insurance is not the only one, so.
And deductibles are going crazy, like I have, I mean, even on the personal side, we're seeing now one percent of your coverage A limit. So your house is insured for forty-six or four hundred and sixty thousand. You have a five thousand dollar deductible, they just round it up.
Right.
So the one thing on the deductible that I want you to think about, well, is one, things that you would want to self-insure for wind hail, or those things that you would like to buy back down to a ten thousand dollar deductible. So that is an entire separate policy, and you can pick and choose the items that you'd like to do a deduct buyback, buy down on. So your basic deductible is still going to stay the same with EMC, but on this separate policy that's written outside of EMC, you would purchase a separate policy to have those items be at a ten thousand wind hail. So I think of things like the detached garage over here. So if that's insured for, say, we have eleven sixty-five, and it's totally destroyed in a storm, you have a fifty thousand dollar deductible.
Just self-insure?
That, that, that's what I'm telling you, is that take a look at that, and if there's things that you want to, that's fine. If you don't, give me the details so that, whoa, at the deductible buyback option to ten thousand of eight thousand and six dollars, that includes a whole blanket limit of thirty-four million eight hundred and seventy-six seventy. So that premium will change, that's very changeable, because that included everything. The property in the open, I want you to take a look at that also. So when you, you'll see in the statement of values, there are items that are marked property in the open. So for example, scoreboard, visitor bleachers, light poles, home bleachers, things like that. Those are things that depending on the limit that's on them, you can buy back down and pick and choose, again, to a five thousand dollar deductible minimum or two percent of the limit we have on the item.
Kim, who set the values on the buildings?
Those are actually done at EMC, they're based off the square footage.
So they set the values?
They do, but here's what they do. They kind of do like in, like in average. And so we're going to talk about this also, because this is a blanket limit. That thirty-three, thirty-three, three hundred and twenty-five, one forty-six is a blanket limit. So we take, for instance, if this entire education complex was wiped out, nothing else was touched, you would have this thirty-three, one two five, okay? Now, if everything was wiped out, we're talking garage, we're talking the football field, like every single thing was wiped out, same thing holds true. So, and we will be looking at, as soon as the new construction building comes off of the builder's risk, we'll have to account for that in our total. And that was probably looking like, but there was a lot of remod, I mean, there was some remodeling considered into that total dollar amount too. I mean, we can see things from three twenty-five per square foot, four eighty-nine per square foot.
Larry, what's our engineer telling us right now? Square foot price?
The shop is at two sixty-five.
For the shop?
But it's going up, they went up fifteen percent.
You, explain to me, you got value type, replacement cost?
Yes.
But yet you establish a value?
No, but, so we establish, it is replacement cost, because it's not based on actual cash value, okay? But it's a blanket limit, so it's up to that amount.
If replacement cost is over thirty-three million?
That is our blanket limit.
So we don't have replacement cost?
You do have replacement cost, but up to that limit.
As long as it's under that.
Yes, because if you had actual cash value, then depreciation is taken.
And that's why I think it's important to let them set the value. Because if we set the value, the first thing they'll do is come back and say we didn't have value.
Premium accordingly, but.
And I don't, do I think there's room for increasing that blanket limit? Yes. I actually think about this, this education complex right here.
Well, I'm just, you know, you tell us replacement cost, and then, but it's still going to count.
Right, because it's a blanket limit.
Whatever terminology you like to use, it's still a cap.
But how do you establish a value and set premium on it if you don't set a number?
Here's the element, so same took.
Using the term replacement value is a little misleading, though.
Well, we can have replacement if we have only twenty million dollars worth of, we can get twenty million dollars worth of replacement.
Yeah.
Once we hit thirty-three million plus one, then we're at.
Why they use that average? Affordability, if we took this total square footage, new addition of existing school times four hundred and eighty dollars per square foot, where does that go with affordability there? But that's, I mean, your choice, like I will, I will quote increases however you want.
I didn't, one of the things I didn't understand quite was, you have cyber.
Oh.
And so is this what you're talking about where I see a Russian mafia taking over your website, and now all of a sudden, now we can't get it back?
Right, and they want.
Not, and not only our website, like our entire system, so all of our grades, yeah, ransomware.
And so they talk about cyber all the time. Like most, all of our commercial policies have basic cyber. We see a lot of promotion of the going outside your company policy to a specific cyber policy with a cyber company. So we talked about this one a little bit. As for things I wanted to ask you, you know, check on your, you know, technology side of things and providers and things you use, you know, there's certain things. We have phishing warnings, you know, to prevent somebody from clicking on something they shouldn't. We have multi-factor login, so I have my email, I have my password, and then I have another version that they send something to, and I have to confirm my login.
Do we have that currently at the school?
We have, yes.
With the state?
We have multi.
Yeah. So they're, correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't their policy cover us in that situation? Whoever hosts our email, if it's that multi, you know, login situation, that's my understanding of it.
The state of South Dakota hosts our email for all staff and our students, and they also host our grade student management system, campus. We get, we get emails.
Right, because it's a blanket limit.
Whatever terminology you like to use, it's still a cap.
But how do you establish a value and set premium on it if you don't set a number?
Here's the element.
I'm just saying, using the term replacement value is a little misleading how.
Well, we can have replacement if we have only twenty million dollars worth of, we can get twenty million dollars worth of replacement.
Yeah.
Once we hit thirty three million plus one, then we're at.
Here's why they use that average. Affordability, if we took this total square footage, new addition of existing school times four hundred and eighty dollars per square foot, where does that go with affordability? There. But that's, I mean, your choice. Like I will, I will quote increases however you want.
I didn't, one of the things I didn't understand quite was you have cyber.
Oh.
And so is this what you're talking about where I see a Russian mafia taking over your website and now all of a sudden now we can't get it back?
Right, and they want.
Not, and not only our website, like our entire system, so all of our grades, yeah, ransomware.
And so they talk about cyber all the time, like most, all of our commercial policies have basic cyber. We see a lot of promotion of the going outside your company policy to a specific cyber policy with a cyber company. So we talked about this one a little bit, um, as for things I wanted to ask you. You know, check on your, you know, technology side of things and providers and things you use. You know, there's certain things, um, we have phishing warnings, you know, to prevent somebody from clicking on something they shouldn't. We have, um, multi-factor login. So I have my email, I have my password. And then I have another version that they send something to and I have to confirm my login.
Do we have that currently at the school?
We have, yes, we have multi.
Yeah. So they're, correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't their policy cover us in that situation? Whoever hosts our email, if it's that multi, you know, login situation, that's my understanding of it.
The state of South Dakota hosts our email for all staff and our students. And they also host our grade student management system, campus. We get, we get emails almost daily of those that are getting spam or, um, you said it earlier, the.
Phishing.
The phishing emails. And so there's a list of it and then our tech coordinator contacts each of those individually, finds out what they did with the email, if they opened it, if they deleted it, if they forwarded it, all those things. And that's almost daily.
Lori, can you find out what some of the other districts are doing in regards to that? I'd be interested to know that if they're relying more on the state because they're hosting the integrated campus, et cetera.
I would say relying on the host in the situation as the state.
Because that's the big issue. I mean, no matter what, I mean, you see these hospitals, they, they get taken down with ransomware or cities that get taken down with ransomware. They're all doing the best they can protecting, but it only takes one, one bad deal.
Is that a cyber insurance?
It's a specific cyber insurance.
Is it expensive?
Yeah, it is.
Um, yeah, uh, well, the policy, uh, the policy that we quoted was a premium of seven thousand two hundred and forty seven. So the only difference would be is we would take off the cyber from the EMC policy, which that one's four hundred and forty four dollars.
For how much covered?
But the limits are not, the limits are not as much and not as broad. I, I mean, I think maybe sometimes maybe fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that was the other thing I was going to mention too. If you look at, if you're concerned about any of those property in the open things, anything that you would decide to move to a separate property in the open policy, those things will get taken off of the EMC policy.
We're a million dollar liability right now?
Yeah, but you have the umbrella as well.
Okay.
Yes.
And what's our umbrella?
Five.
Okay.
And that was increased last year. If you go to, um, after the statement of values, there's a page that says, um, EMC quote overview, and that gives you, um, the individual limits.
You know, in your general liability on that page, you got the violent event response in the middle under the general liability.
Yep.
Does that fall into like a, a school shooting or something?
Yes, those, and that was actually discussed at, uh, probably last year's meeting or the one before where we upped that. And that's based on enrollment count, that premium.
So looking back at your list of properties, so like if I look at building three.
Yep.
Our value is four thousand eight hundred and five dollars, correct?
Yes. So this statement of values is a guideline.
Right.
That, that doesn't say, oh, no, building three, track storage building, your limit's four thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Again, something happened just to that one building, you go back to your blanket limit.
Okay. So let's say we said we wanted to self insure on, you know, building three, I look at building five, you know, building eight, you know, fencing. You go right on down the line, some of those, I mean, is there significant savings that can be had from that or not?
Well, here's what's going to happen. They're still going to stay on the policy because they're still going to have your other tariffs covered. So the fifty thousand dollar deductible for those items is only wind and hail. So, uh, there's vandalism, there's fires, you know, something not wind and hail. Someone who doesn't have insurance drives into the fence, wrecks, things like that. So there, those things won't come off of the policy. You just, if there's a loss, it will be below the deductible.
But, but even if it's, let's say the building's just, I mean, we have some of these smaller sheds. I mean, five thousand dollar building is more of a shed. It, are we better off just self insuring a five thousand dollar shed than placing it on our policy and? What liability on something if you did something like that?
That, they will still be on there. Like I, if we, okay, so I see what you're saying, like taking them completely off. We don't care what happens.
Yeah.
We're not insuring them.
Correct. We're self insuring.
But then I don't know that we've, that that makes sense because we're still not going to lower this blanket limit.
The blanket limit will not go down. Okay.
And so that's where.
And that's where the price is?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, other questions for Kim?
Business auto. Our deductible there is.
You have a five hundred comp, five hundred, five hundred collision deductible. Um, with the exception of a nineteen ninety five pickup and a nineteen ninety eight pickup, and those have liability only.
Okay.
And we did check like a year or so ago about raising that and it wasn't, no, it's hardly any difference in cost.
Didn't we, five, six, seven, eight years ago, go at the thirty thousand? And a three-year payback to self insure on the auto? That would be before you, Kim.
Right, a long time before me because I've been familiar with this policy for a long ti- for a long time before I was a court attorney.
I recall, I probably remember something with that or whatever.
I just don't know why, when you consider the size of what vehicles are right now, a suburban, a bus, I would go.
No, it was a three-year payback.
Okay.
With that deductible, we would pay back and then
Okay.
we'd have gotten that premium. I recall something we did.
That might have been the pickup and the two pickups because that's why we only have liability on them to be with this.
I would just think that EMC has had your auto insurance for a long time and I've, I've never heard of a buyback program.
I don't think that was us.
I thought we did.
I do remember when you say now though, looking at, I remember we had the conversation about, you know, raising our deductibles. I remember that.
I mean, unless.
I remember the payback on them, three years. Because we looked at what we would collect or whatever.
Any other questions for Kim? Okay. If not, Kim, thanks a million for coming down tonight. We really appreciate it and, uh, if we have any questions, just we'll have the group get back to Lori and
That sounds good.
they'll send them on over to you. Nicely put together. I appreciate this, uh, this page of notes.
I tried to keep it simple.
Yeah.
I have a lot more papers I could have shared.
This was, this was easy to understand.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. You're welcome. And you know where I'm at. Yep, we'll be in touch.
Okay, moving on from public communications, motion to approve the minutes of our May fifteenth meeting.
So move.
Thank you, Marty, second.
Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the financial statements as presented.
So move.
Thank you, Joel, second.
Second.
Thank you, Marty, discussion. You know, just one thing. I, I appreciate you putting that interesting tidbit, I'll throw it in right here, that we serve six thousand nine hundred and seventeen breakfasts last year, sixty thousand two hundred and eighty seven lunches and only sixty nine alternative meals. That's, that's an amazing statistic. That's really good for our district. That's for those that are not math inclined, i.e. me. Lori did the math. It is point zero zero one percent of our meals that have been alternative meals in the last year. So that's good to know. I know that was something we had looked into quite a bit this fall and winter and spent quite a bit of time on. Be nice if it was zero, but sixty nine is pretty close. Anything else on the financial statements? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the claims as presented. Thank you, Aaron, second.
Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion.
I don't have any.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to set the time and place for our budget hearing, which will be at seven PM at our next meeting, which is what, July tenth? July tenth, with a regular board meeting to follow.
So move.
Thanks, Joel, second.
Second.
Thank you, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve South Dakota High School Activities Association two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four membership. Thank you, Marty, second.
Second.
Thank you, Larry, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve open enrollment apps twenty four oh one through twenty four oh nine. Thank you, Aaron, second.
Second.
Thank you, Marty, discussion.
Is that eight kids?
Nine, and it's all kids that we've kind of planned on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion to approve the contract for Val Ingstrom, one act play.
So move.
Thank you, Larry, second.
Second.
Thank you, Marty, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve contract for Alicia Garrett, one act play.
So move.
Thank you, Joel, Larry, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve Kelly Nimmer as junior class advisor.
So move.
Thank you, Joel, second.
Second.
Thank you, Aaron, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve Michelle Bloom as paraprofessional.
So move.
Thank you, Marty, second.
Second.
Thank you, Joel, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the, uh, Amanda Stolken as elementary special ed teacher. Thank you, second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve a change of address to seven thirty-three East Second Street for the business office.
So move.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Discussion.
This is the address that was provided to us through, uh, Brian Anderson is who I contacted with the emergency management. He coordinated with whoever he needed to coordinate with to come up with this particular address. Uh, as you know, the office will be just south of this wall here with the main entrance facing east. And so it is a East Second Street address. It's an odd numbered address because it's on the west side of the street, which is east.
Just a side note, in all of the madness and mayhem going on around here with the project, good catch to realize that, that we needed to change our address. Good job.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the comprehensive special education plan.
So move.
Thank you, Marty, second.
Second.
Thank you, Aaron, discussion.
I'll try to be extremely brief with this. Um, this is the comprehensive plan that we have. Um, a master copy is provided to us from Northeast Special Services Cooperative. And then Mr. Case and I go through and make amendments to it so that it is specifically for Webster area school district. And so we've done our edits to it that we believe should be included, and that's all included. I didn't email this to you, I don't believe, or I think I said it's available upon request. Um, this basically goes in, in the file and it's something we have to have on file as an individual school district. But a good portion of it's taken care of through our cooperative. So, um, I will forward this front cover sheet to the co-op tomorrow. Will be taken care of. It basically is a plan of how we handle special needs and special education services within our district.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the safe return to school policy. Thank you, Aaron, second.
Second.
Thank you, Larry, discussion. All in favor, say aye. We're just going right past that one. I really.
There might be some confusion that we even have to do this, but this is follow-up requirements with all of the COVID funding that occurred. And if, if you, I don't know if you got a copy of this or not, but if you look, the, uh, the, the main page on the inside, you'll see that it's approved, each one of the, the dates that we needed to do it. I purposely put those in place so it would be a reminder to us that we have to provide uh, opportunity for public input as to how we are handling COVID within our school system. I did send the, uh, the survey out, um, via a calling system this last time and previously I had done it with, um, just a push notice to parents. Well, I didn't realize that the calling system goes to the student cell phones. So I got a plethora of responses this time. Uh, I think we had seventeen responses in November and after about a week and a half, I had one hundred and eighty-six responses, I think. And so, um, we did get quite a bit of response and most of the response was, we still have to do this, there's still an issue. We have the plan in place if, uh, an outbreak were to occur or something had to, we had to deal with something. So it basically is just keeping things in place if we do have a need for it. This should be the last time that we have to do this.
Don't have a top ten student response to the return to school plan or anything like that?
I will say there are some that I could not share publicly.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two audit report.
So move.
Thank you, Joel, second.
Second.
Thank you, Larry, discussion. All looks good.
Little definitions.
Yeah. Other than Larry, I think finding a typo, um, maybe we'll get a.
Lori. Two, page twenty-four.
We'll see if we can get a refund on part of our fee there if Larry can prove that they cited the wrong statute. That's pretty good. I didn't check the statutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the new capitalization policy, uh, revision. Thank you, Marty, second.
Second.
Thank you, Larry. This exciting tidbit of information is brought to you by, are auditors correct on the state of South Dakota? Am I correct on that, Lori?
Yes, a new law change, another Gatsby rule.
You should push that out to the, uh, main student body and see how, what type of response you get. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, superintendent report, Dr. Block.
The first item that I have, and I'm pleased to say this, but we have reached a full accreditation. Um, I received, uh, a second review response last week and there were just a couple of really minor things that we needed to take care of, uh, just as follow-up with the first go-round. So we are fully accredited, we're not on probation, there's nothing. Um, there were, the corrective action that we had shared with you, um, at last month's meeting regarding the, the teacher evaluations and making sure that we're covering all four domains in the evaluation tool, that's already in place. We've got it in place for this year, uh, finishing out our evaluations and it will be in place in, in frontline, which is the online system that we use. Uh, so I'm, I'm pleased to have that done. Uh, we're credited for another five years and we'll, we'll, we'll continue to do what we need to do the next five years so that, um, we can hopefully have a little bit faster accreditation process next time. Because I, I will be honest, I was a little disappointed with, with some of the, the things that we had to do, um, that we knew or, or found out. It was some things that we kind of, we missed, so. Um, the second item that I have on. The second item that I have on my my list is, I don't know how much of a debate it's going to be, it's going to become, but dual credit courses. Historically here in Webster, we have always given, I don't know who came up with these numbers. I've been here since early two thousands, and we have always given one point two five credits for a three credit, it's high school credits, for a three credit college course. And then we prorate if it's a two credit or a one credit, that type of thing. The state is now, they must have, there must be some some issues with the fact that we do it our way, Groban does it their way, Rapid City does it their way. They're trying to find some consistencies, one of the problems that has come up. They have some suggestions here. They wanted to change a three qual, three credit college class to to one high school credit, and then prorate it downward if they needed to. But what they have found out is that both Rapid City and Sioux Falls don't like this suggestion or this proposal. And now it's turned into kind of a discussion, study process to to figure out how best are we going to address this situation so that there aren't winners and losers, losers, but maybe a compromise. I can tell you, I, when I first read the email asking for input at the state level regarding our schools, I I really was, I was almost, you know what, I'm gonna drive to Pierre, I'm gonna just kind of fight for this and do whatever we need to. But I believe where we're at, we're not gonna see a significant change. I I can't imagine that it's gonna go to point five credits, which is where Sioux Falls and Rapid City are at for a three credit class at the at the college level. I just don't see that extreme happening. So if it does get adjusted, I believe it's gonna be minor enough for us to be able to to accept it. The reason we probably do what we do is we're on block scheduling. Eight credits per year, that's thirty-two credits that you could potentially earn in high school. Now, we do allow kids to only take six credits during their junior year and their senior year because they can take work release. But we do require the between seven and eight credits their freshman and sophomore year. So our students have no issue earning enough credits. And we already have the ability for students to earn enough credits to graduate early if they wish to. It is so, so rare. In the twenty-two years that I've been here, I probably couldn't say there's maybe three kids that have graduated one semester early, which is what our policy allows. You can't graduate a whole year early, our policy doesn't allow. You can do one semester. And I think that is the fear that Rapid City and Sioux Falls have, is that if they they give too large of credits that they aren't currently allowing with their their systems, that they could have potentially a large number of students graduating early. Understandable concern.
Would that affect their funding?
It does affect their funding if the student finishes, like in ours, if they finish in December, they are no longer on our on our student count, so it would affect our our average funding over the year because we only have half of them. Basically, the funding for half the year for a particular student that happens. Not a big issue for a school our size unless we're, you know, seeing eight, ten kids graduate early every year. So it could be an issue for Sioux Falls and Rapid City, but I also look at the size of their their enrollments. I mean, they'd have to have a huge amount of kids, hundreds of kids, hundreds of kids, to see a significant difference. So where's it going, I I don't know. And I I did choose not to volunteer to be on the discussion panel for this. I'm gonna kind of monitor it from afar and and go from there and provide input as they they request it via email, so. But both Chelsea Larson and I thought it was important for you guys as board members to know that there might be some changes. And your kids might come home and say, hey, we used to get a one point two five, and now they're changing this. Well, it might not be us that's changing, it's the state that would be changing. Because sometimes changes aren't accepted all at once. State reports, I actually just finished the 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 end of the year report today, and it includes multiple things. Our, we have a special ed discipline, we have a safe, drug-free, gun-free, weapon-free, violence-free report that we have to do for discipline, the personnel record forms that Laurie and I can take care of with with our, basically our our staff, suspension and expulsion, all of those things are complete. The only thing that is not complete part of the the personnel record forms, the state has done two major overhauls with the personnel record forms and with teacher certification. And if you heard anything in the news, the teacher certification portion, that that process is not going quite, it's not going very smooth at all. They are so backlog and so overloaded with inputting data that didn't didn't cross over into the new system. So the PRF seem to be doing better, and but there's still a few parts that's not working. Teacher staff in service. We are, we're planning to to put together what we we hope to with paraprofessional training. We plan to have them here for two, two full days in August, going from one day to two. And Mr. Case and I will be working on on the topics that we'll have for our other in-service states throughout the school year. One of those is the school safety and security. We recently had our local law enforcement, which includes highway patrol, sheriff, and police department. They brought up a very, a very good point. A community our size, we really have a very, very large law enforcement presence within this community. I can tell you, coming from Henry twenty years ago, there was a deputized sheriff that basically ran the tire shop in Henry, and he was a great guy, he's since passed away, but but there there really was virtually no law enforcement in Henry unless you waited twenty minutes for people to get there. So we have a very large, a high number of law enforcement, not just the highway patrol that that live here because they, highway patrol comes through here quite a bit with other other troopers, so. They were here to do their own walkthrough in the morning of June thirtieth, and then they met with our staff at one thirty in the afternoon. Basically, it was just to give a little bit of a a scenario of what they do when they would do an active shooter situation, how they're gonna treat people, anybody in the hallway is gonna be, probably have a gun pointed at them, we wanted our our staff to know that. They talked about a few of the things that we can do to either hunker down, decide if we're gonna do that, or if we're gonna flee the building. That really comes down to the teachers, and we have to do our best to empower them with the the best ability to make those decisions. We will have the Alice training coming up next year. I will say that my my most recent correspondence with the highway patrol regarding that training, it doesn't appear that August is gonna work as well, so we might be looking at the September in-service date for that. It is still something, it's not as in-depth as I as I was hoping to be. He said it's only about a two-hour training, but if we can do that on an annual basis, I still think that that will be a a better for us because we'll have more of a consistent and more frequent review of those types of things. And I would assume and hope that they will make edits to that program as as the the process to handling situations like that changes with more information and more training, so.
Jim, I think we should make that an annual event that we're coordinating with our local law enforcement. I mean, just good to get them in here in the morning, whether it's an in-service or if it can't work for us to have an in-service with them, just even getting them in at some point in time. Even if it's during the school day, let let our kids see law enforcement, I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
Extremely important that you mention that. Mr. Case and I have always had an open invitation for any law enforcement that's within our our area. You wanna stop up and say hi to me or walk through the halls, just let us know that you're at the door and we'll let you in. And I I think that presence is good for our our students and staff to see. And so that's already, that invitation is already there, and we're gonna try to coordinate a little bit better to see it happen more often, make it more of a purposeful thing for just the the unscheduled visits.
Sure.
As well as trying to provide some some annual information between our staff and.
Because they change out, you know, so much, especially within city and highway patrol and sheriff's office, I mean, game fishing parks, just good to keep them all. One day, they all meet here and go through and see the staff.
It's also good to point out, too, we we've opened up our facility for training. Our resting room is actually been a very good location for the game fishing parks and highway patrol to do their self-defense training. And so if you ever see twenty game fishing parks vehicles out there, it's not because they're putting on some sort of a duck hunting seminar or something, it's probably because they're doing some sort of a of training for their their self-defense or their law enforcement, so. I'm always open to that type of thing, we've got facilities here for for agencies like that to use, so anytime that we can, we can accommodate, then we do.
There's one time over at the Armory Park, and lots of, you know, the northeast mental health sign up there, and there was all twenty-plus troopers that were over there having a meeting that day.
You took a picture.
Well, so I went in and I invited them all out to take a picture underneath the sign. They did not think it was funny as I did, but I know them pretty well, so I thought I would at least try to have a future exhibit. I'm still hoping to get that someday. Just from what I've heard through the grapevine, I think that was a very good morning when they were here from staff, and I think that was really good.
And it doesn't have to be, you know, a two-hour grind through some power points. I think just the fact that we gave them the time to, because I I remember saying, we've scheduled two hours, this might take thirty minutes, it might take more. It went about an hour and twenty, hour and a half, because our staff had questions.
That's great.
And that, to me, that's as valuable as it gets, they get to ask the questions if they want.
And did you talk about the SWAT training where they went through the entire school?
I didn't call it SWAT training, but that's what they did in the morning was, they basically, I gave them floor plans of our school, and they they did some of their own training as to how to go into each individual room. What I learned from that and having a conversation with them later in the morning was, we have a lot of doors in this building. They said, man, we it, we don't realize it until we actually come into your facility. And and when they're trying to, you know, check the next area and protect themselves with every single door, they they said, man, we didn't realize how many doors there are in the school and how many smaller spaces there are, so. It's good for them, too, to come to the facility.
So thank, thank God we got the warning out to some of those staff members that were in their classrooms because the SWAT members were coming out with their guns, and it would have scared the heck out of them, but that did not happen.
Right.
Unless you have questions, that's that's all I have for another question.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Block. Principal report, Mr. Case.
Uh, Dr. Block pretty much covered it all. Driver's Ed, we're out in full force, Cal Nygaard is out driving, he's got half of his students done already. So he's actually driving with thirty-seven, I'll be driving with twelve. And so, yeah, beware of us out there. Otherwise, it's fin- finishing up a couple of reports, and Dr. Block and I will be planning for those in-services like he had mentioned, and and just to let you know, I won't be here for the July meeting, I will be going over with the exchange program for the German exchange, so I'll be over in Germany at that time. So otherwise, yeah, things are. What's that?
Staffing-wise, we're good.
Yeah, staffing-wise, we're good, we're got pretty much everything in place for for next year. One more para we need to hire, so I'm I'm waiting on one right now, so. Unless somebody else moves into the district or there's another need somewhere else, we're sitting pretty good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Case, N E S C.
I don't think we were able to attend this one because we had, our meeting was delayed.
Okay.
I looked through the notes, I didn't see anything that was for the minutes from it, I didn't see anything extended.
Buildings and grounds, we're gonna go ahead and walk down and just take a look if we can get through there. Jim, just short, but before we go walk down through there, is there anything we need to talk about here as a group on? Building and grounds, and then we'll just adjourn to walk down through there, come back, and just a couple of short little things and we'll be done.
So originally, we were supposed to move into the office in the first part of June, that has been delayed to next week. As I understand it, we cannot legally occupy the office area until there is an active, fully functioning fire alarm system. And so A B C Building Controls will be here Monday and Tuesday to install that. They will be also putting an additional panel in the the utility maintenance room in the middle school that will basically run a portion of this new facility. I think that's how they're gonna connect that. So it isn't as as easy as coming and hooking up these six offices and saying, there it's on. They actually have to put another panel and connect that, so it's it's a two-to-three day process for them. So we're hoping by next Thursday, a week from this coming Thursday, that we perhaps will be able to move in to the office area. They do have the carpet in, the baseboard is up, the cabinets that we have so far are in, countertops are not in, but and most of the ceiling tile, they're still doing some electrical work and the fire alarm system works, so. Otherwise, the progress on the the southern part of it, they have the the tile flooring done in the fax kitchens, and they continue to put up, the the restroom walls are all in place now. There's still some maestro walls that need to be put in place. And then there'll be some discussion regarding the thickness of the concrete, that's one of the things that Larry Joel and I had some conversation with when we met last Tues, a week ago Tuesday, regarding the thickness. We wanna make sure that what we build is going to take care of whatever we might actually have in there. When you start jacking up large pieces of equipment, put on a smaller jack, make sure that that the foundation is what we want it to be, so. We have requested some information on that to to help make some decisions in the future.
We still have the meeting tomorrow, that hasn't changed, right?
Correct, it is tomorrow, isn't it?
That's how I told you.
Yes, because originally, we were supposed to meet tomorrow and do the the punch list, and then by this Thursday, we're supposed to move in, but it's, yeah, it'll be moved to next week sometime.
And of course, till you remove, they can't do any demo order.
No, they have started the demolition in the old middle school science lab and the computer lab. They've basically have done all of the electrical demo, all of the outlets and everything are are disconnected and taken care of in there. So they have started that. I haven't, we haven't seen any demolition of any walls or anything like that, or taking out the windows between rooms. But they're, they can start that anytime that they need to. The business office, however, as Larry has said, because we're occupying that, that's gonna be delayed for that portion to be demoed and how it began. As for summer projects above and beyond, I will be honest, Laurie and I haven't really looked at the capital lay list in in the last week and a half, once we've been focusing on some other things. But we've got a pretty good idea of of some of the things that we we believe we need to take care of this summer. We did last week get two different rains during driver's ed, and unfortunately, we do have a leak, actually two leaks, possibly the same leak in the music room. And so we haven't had that issue in that room for quite some time. I have Pro-Tech roofing out of Watertown coming, he's actually doing some work on Main Street. He wasn't able to get over here this afternoon, he's, he's gonna be with me tomorrow, and he will go up on the roof to see if they can find out what might be causing that issue.
See, they started the retaining wall, too.
Yes, that started today, good point. So that's that's underway as well.
Alright, let's go take a look then.
It was better. Is that Louis Lomond?
Yep.
Did you ever read the book Glass of Breath? Is that how they read it?
Glass of Breath?
Well, I think it says it exists, just the cold might be, it just says that walls are expensive.
Yes, bomber pilot?
Yep.
Yep, yep, yep. One of my, that's my favorite legal workbook.
Good for you.
Good for you.
Well, we're gonna. Should've.
You should've.
Yeah, there's something.
You lived.
Well, yeah.
What happened?
Lori, did you guys remember we talked about?
We lost you.
Yeah.
He's pretty good guy.
Yeah, he's...
Yeah, I think he's a good guy.
Oh, she did go back. Okay. Anything else on buildings and grounds? All right, if not, moving on. NPIP reserve buy-in dispersment. Lori.
Just what the note said, I just wanted you guys to be aware of that, so good situation, we're in there.
Yep. Okay. Finally, we went over already the property liability insurance issues, that'll be discussed next month. That's all we have, I think we'll have a motion to move into executive session. Our next meeting will be Monday, July tenth at...
Seven.
Seven. Sound good for everybody?
Sound good.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All full, same sign, motion carries. See you July tenth. Lori, you do not have to stick around for our executive session.